Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, April 19th, 2021. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed on the Parsippany website. Would Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich. Councilman DePiero. Mr. Dinsmore. Mr. Fergieri. Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Ms. Jan.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy. He could probably just raise his hand. He's having some technical problems. Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
And Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us our Board Planner, Ms. Favate, and our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
All right, very good. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so just for the record, we do have an adequate quorum without Mr. Mealy, but he's on video. We're having audio trouble. I think that it should be sufficient if he raises his hand for yay or maybe gives a thumbs down for nay if it should be required. Mr. Wenzel, let you make a final call on that.
No, that should be fine as long as we can acknowledge him and I believe Mr. Mealy will keep his gestures to the appropriate mannerisms and it should be fine.
All right, very good. So on today's agenda, we have a resolution, an application, and then we have some ordinances for review. As I understand it, we have an adjournment for the application, so let's take care of that first.
Would you like me to go ahead?
Go ahead, Mr. Dolan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matt Dolan from the law firm of Minor and Landis here on behalf of the applicant Wildlife Preserves, Inc. We do have an application before the board for a preliminary and final site plan, sea variance, and a subdivision. Prior to the meeting tonight, I had had some conversation, I think I had two conversations. I had one with Mr. Lot and one with Mr. Wenzel and Mr. Lot related to some ancillary issues to our application before the board. I had indicated to Mr. Lot and Mr. Wenzel that we would agree to adjourn this meeting in order to hopefully work out some of those ancillary issues related to the application. So as a result, I am requesting that we carry this to your next building.
Okay. Nora, do you have a date?
Yes, June 7.
All right, so we will adjourn you until June 7th, 2021. No additional notice will be required. Anything else?
Okay, yes, that is accurate. I'm assuming if Matt hasn't already said it, that the applicant waives the time for hearing the application, correct, Mr. Dolan?
Yes, absolutely.
And Mr. Dolan and I have already discussed that there was sufficiency in the notice and if there were anything that has to be corrected in the notice, Mr. Dolan has more than enough time to do that between now and June, but there is no need to renotice en masse or publish, republish.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Yep.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, so Mr. Dolan, we will see you again on June 7th. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all very much and thank you very much, Nora, for your help this morning. I appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
You're welcome.
All right.
Always stay on the good side of Nora.
Of course. Have a good night.
A good night. All right, returning back to our resolutions, we all should have received the Morris Corporate Center 6 LLC resolution for the soil moving permit. Is there any conversation to be had or any comments?
Mr. Chairman, only one piece. I had a very late conversation with Mr. O'Neill today and apparently Morris Corporate Center has been transferred or sold. It's now known as May Parsippany. It doesn't change anything with regard to the soil permit or the conditions we discussed last time. All of those will remain the same. The only difference is it's a different corporate name and the resolution I provided to Nora this afternoon has that correct corporate name. All of our documentation showed Morris Corporate Center, but apparently this was a recent change and Mr. O'Neill and I discussed it and we felt it would be appropriate that the resolution itself indicate May Parsippany formerly known as Morris Corporate Center 6 so that 25 years from now Nora can find it again.
Okay. Nora, I didn't realize you were in it for that long. No retirement for you. Okay. So I don't, under your guidance, Mr. Wenzel, I believe that that should be fine to make sure that the resolution includes the name change. Are there any other changes or items that have been reported by any members of the board?
I have a comment if I may.
Please do, Mr. DePiero.
Regarding soil moving permits, Mr. Wenzel, I've always raised the issue. It really doesn't apply to this particular soil moving permit because they'll be most likely using Cherry Hill Road onto Route 80, east or west to 287 north or south, so they will not be on our main road or affect any of our bus routes, I suspect. But my general question for soil moving permits was who has the ability to require safety concerns regarding traffic during school bus times and commuting times?
Well, Councilman, I do remember you bringing this up and I did look into it. The ordinance that the, there can be restrictions placed on the actual soil moving operation and issues related to that, which would be times of operations, control of dust and debris, and also movement of the soil off-site. That is something that is presented to the planning board and then is later presented to the town council. As you well know, Councilman, the actual permit is issued by the township council. It's really the planning board's recommendation to the council. So it's really a joint effort by the planning board and the township council in terms of identifying the times of operation as we did with this one, you know, in terms of the seven to four timeframe and also with identifying the fact that we do not want them to be traveling through certain residential areas or to focus their removal operations off to Route 80, so to speak. So all of those things, all those recommendations can come from the planning board, but ultimately it's the council that issues the permit and the council has its own authority.
Well, here's my, here's my problem. According to our township attorney, which I disagree with, he's telling us that the council does not have the authority to limit travel on our roads, that it's the township engineer only, and we don't have the authority to do that, which I think is ridiculous and that's really my challenge. Council versus township engineer.
Councilman, I can't, I can't speak to the nature of the township attorney's advice because obviously that's his own advice and all I could say is that with regard to an applicant who is seeking a soil moving permit, that applicant is presenting itself to the jurisdiction of the planning board and eventually the council in terms of its operations with regard to soil moving. So there is an opportunity there based upon the application and the nature of the application, where it is, the times, what's being done on site, the amount of movement that's being done on site that may cause the planning board to make recommendations as to certain limitations.
Yes, that also applies to the Board of Adjustment. We've, for many, many years, I've been making, the planning board and the Board of Adjustment have been making recommendations to the council and we've been limiting the hours of operation on our major roads all along. All of a sudden, we're not authorized to do this and that doesn't make any sense to me.
I always suggest to you, Councilman, that maybe the township attorney and yourself, which I know you will, have a further conversation about it, but certainly in terms of a soil moving permit before the, before the planning board, the planning board has the authority under your ordinance to set reasonable restrictions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're muted, John.
Thanks, Steve. So, Mr. Wenzel, being that these are things that are agreed to between the board and the applicant, are those things then binding for the applicant?
Right, so when that, just like any of your resolutions, when you have, in fact, I had this discussion with regard to a completely different municipality where we were discussing the fact that in a resolution there were certain conditions and the question is, are those conditions enforceable? Well, of course they are because why else would you put them in? So, you know, if this soil moving permit is issued with the limitations of the, for example, I know in this one is the 7:00 AM start and 4:00 AM, 4:00 PM end time. If there is a violation of that, that's something that code enforcement, the appropriate code enforcement official or some town official would have to enforce to say you're operating after this time or before this time. Those things are enforceable because otherwise why do you say them?
Okay, thank you. All right, any other commentary on the resolution? Mr. Fergieri, I see you're talking, but you're muted.
That was very perceptive of you, sir. So just as someone who's being asked to vote on this, I looked it over. I didn't pick up this potential issue. I don't know if it was implied in the language and I missed it. What exactly will this vote be authorizing then? Are we, are we finished with this? We reviewed this application and supported it and now it's time to do the formal vote and all that and is our vote going to be undone? Is it a binding vote? I think you might have asked that yourself a moment ago. I'm just a little bit confused. What is, what will transpire here given, because since I've been on the board, we've put plenty of limitations on soil movements and delivery trucks and construction vehicles many times and people had really good feedback about that. People who knew specific neighborhoods and things of that sort. So I'm just not sure what the end game is here. Are we, we're voting on something that's unenforceable or?
No, I don't, Mr. Fergieri, Chairman, if I may, answer Bruce's question?
Somebody.
No, 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 no. That, I don't think that's the suggestion at all. The process for soil movement permit is it gets presented to the planning board for review. The permit is effectively issued through the council, but the, but the review is done here, okay? And those standards are set here because you were the one quote-unquote hearing it, okay? And, and so the, it doesn't get undone and I don't believe that these things would be undone. I don't, I don't, from my understanding, this 7:00, for example, I've been harping on the 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM issue, but using that as an example, that 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM standard is absolutely something that's going to be, it's in the resolution. It is going to be enforceable once the, once the permit is issued. So, you know, I don't know if there's some other issue involved in terms of movement of vehicles or whatever's happening elsewhere with the town council, but as far as this permit is concerned, this is the restrictions that, if you recall, that the applicant themselves has reached to. So they will clearly comply because it's in their interest to comply and quite frankly, this is what will be in the permit.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Okay, any other commentary? All right, then I'll accept the motion on this resolution.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is that a motion to accept the resolution?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Fergieri.
All right, Nora, please call the roll.
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Hernandez? Hernandez. Yes. Mendel?
Yes.
Mealy?
That's a yes for Mealy.
Raise his hand, okay. Napolitano?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have master plan consistency, review of ordinance 2021:08.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please do.
So this is an ordinance that I know Councilman DePiero already knows all about, but it's coming to you all from the council. It is the ordinance amending the municipalities, the townships, the townships, excuse me, stormwater regulations to be consistent with the state's new DEP regulations that were just adopted last month. Every municipality is required to update their stormwater regulations accordingly. Most municipalities are tailoring them a bit and Parsippany is no different. So I am not the engineer. I did not prepare these. Justin Lizza did that. He's been working on it with the township's engineering consultant for quite a while now because this has been coming down the pike for some time. So basically what you have, it is largely based on the state's model ordinance. It does go a bit further than, than the model ordinance, mainly as I understand it in creating a new regulation for minor development. So essentially, anything that either on its own or collectively results in the creation of 400 square feet or more of impervious coverage or disturbs 5,000 square feet or more in land area. And that, as I understand it, is the primary difference. I think there's some other tweaks and adjustments, but basically it's, that's where it's gone a bit farther than the state. Otherwise, I think it's tracking fairly closely to the state's model ordinance. And I don't know, Andrew, if you have any, any other thoughts? I know you've looked at this a bit more probably than I have on some of the details. We did provide the full ordinance just so you have it. It's, it's not short. Sorry, Nora, I know that was paper. Well, actually it was sent digitally. So, Andrew, there you are. Did you want to say anything about?
Yeah, I reviewed it and I went back and forth, not back and forth, but I discussed it with Justin Lizza, the township engineer, and we had several comments on the, as it was originally proposed with a minor site plan and the minor stormwater rules. And we had worked through that and I see a lot of those comments were, were dealt with and incorporated. I thought, I think that was, I think that worked out well. And yeah, so we went over it. I'm satisfied with it. I know there's a big picture here. I am just concerned sometimes when you codify these types of things to such detail, the applicants may have a little difficulty at first, but I think as things move along and as they get used to the new general state stormwater management rules, this will start to become the norm. So, yeah.
Right. And the big picture is that these regulations from a statewide level do a lot more to encourage green infrastructure, not even just encourage it, but really mandate it in many cases. So it is a significant change in terms of stormwater regulation really across the state that, as Andrew said, every applicant is going to have to get up to speed on. They've known it's coming, so they've had some time hopefully to prepare. But anyway, this is on for second reading before the council. See if I have the date. It's in May, I believe, the day after our next meeting. So since this is a meeting that you all had with no applications, we thought it'd be a good time to go ahead and do master plan consistency on this. You know, this was a specific recommendation of the master plan was to adopt the new state, state stormwater regulations, which again, we knew were coming. So that primarily is the reason why we're saying it's consistent. We did cite a couple of the specific goals in the master plan. Basically, the two that deal primarily with environmental resources, you know, one is talking about preserving those, you know, fragile environmental assets. And we think that, you know, this ordinance will do that, will improve those, the protection of those assets by, you know, improving stormwater runoff, improving stormwater quality and quantity regulation. And then the other goal that we think is relevant is the one that speaks to sort of broader sustainability goals and dealing with things like green infrastructure. So clearly, the revised ordinance really goes a lot farther than the existing regulation in, you know, in promoting green infrastructure. So it's a long way of saying that we, you know, we're recommending that the board make a finding of consistency with the master plan and happy to answer any questions. Judy has one.
Yeah, I was, I know I've been asking about this for a long time and I was kind of hoping to see it before it got this far because for Sustainable Jersey, they talk about enhanced stormwater. So I'm guessing we're not going there with this ordinance so much, are we? I mean, maybe Andrew can answer that question.
It is definitely enhanced and stricter than the state one.
Okay, well, maybe we can talk offline then when I submit to Sustainable Jersey then. Okay, thank you.
Judy, were there any specific things that you wanted to see in this?
Well, sustain, you know, I know I'm on a delay, so I'm trying to be brief. Sustainable Jersey has different tiers for points and, and, and so I guess the level of enhancement is, is when you get the most points. And it's how you define impervious coverage and what's made, with the definition of major and minor development is. And, but we're here and this is so heads and shoulders are better than what we've had. So I think, I think we're good. So I'll talk to Andrew and get what I need and Steven off, outside of the meeting. Okay, thanks.
All right, any other board members with questions or comments? Ms. Jane?
So did I hear correctly that this one is a little bit more stringent than what New Jersey is recommending on the minor development?
Well, and Andrew could probably speak more knowledgeably than I can, but I don't think that the state actually has a minor development. Is that correct, Andrew?
That's correct. It only regulates major developments and the state definition didn't change that much. It's still an acre of disturbance. It's still a quarter acre of new impervious. However, they brought in a bunch of different activities that would trigger the quarter acre of new impervious. For example, if you, if a parking lot or an area was not curbed before and now it needs to, now either the board or the applicant wants it to be curbed, that changes a project and may kick it in to become a major development. So the language hasn't changed that much, but like I had mentioned, the result may end up being a big change. So, and then back to Judy's comment, and I don't have the ordinance open on my computer here. I'm trying to find it, but the, the town ordinance for a major development or what constitutes additional, the definition for a major is a little bit stricter and more enhanced in the town version. So it will, it will help with the sustainable application, I believe, and we can go over that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and that definition of minor is also being used by other municipalities. It's not something that Parsippany sort of came up with on its own and the intent is that, you know, you're really trying to capture these small developments that on their own may not be, you know, significantly impactful to stormwater, but over time, you know, again and again and again, cumulatively, cumulatively have a large impact. So, you know, to capture those.
No, I totally appreciate the sentiment behind it. I guess my, my comment would be, if I start looking at minor development and I look at individual developments, just, I'm using the word where you lose the burden that may get placed on the individual developments and is the township set up to support them and help them figure out what the solution should be. Because 400 square feet is pretty, I think it's, I think that's the amount, that's a pretty small disturbance. And any thoughts or anything that you're at the township level you all have thought about? Because as people start putting things in or start doing DIYs, can the town really support the application review along with what needs to be done to, or suggestions or solutions that need to be taken into account?
Yeah, it's a good point. We can, we can bring that up to the township engineer offline. I think enforcement will be obviously another part of this.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, and I think, I think this is the right direction. I would just kind of maybe take a step back and say, what problem are we trying to solve? Is it the major problem or the minor? And if it's really a minor development problem, should we do it in a phased approach and at the same time provide, hey, here are some recommendations to go fix that? Whereas you, otherwise the township is going to get an undated.
We're going to make Jen a little bit busier than she already is, I guess.
Well, I can comment on that. The minor was actually, the definition of it was, was kind of made it to be a larger project, had to be at least 5,000 square feet of disturbance, which is the size and that's a good size because that's the size that also triggers a soil movement, a county soil conservation district approval. And they also have their own stormwater requirements as well. So it kind of, it, it, it goes farther than the major development. It picks up the larger projects, the, the full home rebuilds and the like. So it kind of hits the projects that are, that are smaller than the major development, but not the small projects. If you're redoing, just redoing your driveway or doing a very small addition or a shed, it's, it's, it's of a larger size that it addresses that the knockdowns and rebuilds. It's when you have about, the limitation is a 5,000 square feet of disturbance or, or the 400 square feet of increase in impervious. So, and yeah, there's going to be complaints, I think, from both sides. So why am I being regulated? It's, there is, I can't stress this enough, there's definitely a cost for everyone who's going to be doing some kind of work. These improvements cost money. They, they, soil testing costs money to get done, so there is going to be a cost. However, there is a benefit. So there, there is going to be, I think this is going to be the, you know, 2021, 2022, there may be a learning curve on this and things will eventually smooth out. But, but yeah, it's a big change. It's a, it's a big change now that it was being addressed.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, totally agree. It's a big change. And again, just as I said, a consideration to go figure out how do we base it in and not make it overly burdensome for, for the residents of this township. So.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Mendel.
Yeah. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Mandel.
Yeah, Andrew, four hundred square feet is not an awful lot.
No, no.
Basically, if somebody decides to put in a patio, uh, they, they fall under this regulation now.
Yeah, my opinion was it should have been higher, but I was just, you know, I was just, I just gave my opinion and, and that's where, you know.
But, and what you stated was the state does not have a, a value of four hundred square feet.
No, the state only regulates, the state, if the township was to adopt the state regulation only, it would only regulate major developments, which is a quarter acre, which is ten thousand square feet of, of impervious. Or an, and, and a combination, an acre of disturbance and/or a quarter acre of impervious. So it's, it's a, it's, uh, you know, from four hundred to ten thousand square feet. Four hundred is the impervious limit on a minor and, um, ten thousand square feet. Um, however, the requirements for a minor, and I don't have them up in front of me, are much less. But yes, uh, uh, I, I, I'll be, uh, full candor. I was concerned about the, the, the size as well. So we'll, you know, we'll have to see where, where, where we end up.
Where did the four hundred feet come from?
I don't know. Um, um, I, Susan, maybe if you have a little bit more intel, I don't know the history.
Yeah.
How the ordinance was drafted and how it was crafted and, uh, and, and.
I think it may have, I think it may have come from New Jersey Future, which is another nonprofit organization that, that was sort of circulating, you know, to models. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. That sounds like.
Well, watershed develop, watershed development, the watershed, um, they had a whole model ordinance out there that a lot of municipalities are, are, um, emulating.
If this is going to prevent people from putting a deck on their house, I think we should veto it, vote it down and correct that. I mean, that's, that's gotten down too small. It's going to affect individual residents from fixing up their property. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, I agree with you, uh, councilman. I, that's why I questioned the four hundred feet. I mean, it's one thing to have to, you know, go before the, the zoning board or the, what, whatever, uh, for the permits. But, uh, to impose on, you know, a four hundred square foot, something seems like a, an awful lot. I, I don't know what the right number is, but four hundred is pretty small.
We should read the ordinance. It's four, it's, it's not just four hundred. And it's important. Will disturb us five thousand square feet or more of land, but do not meet the definition of major development. I'm sorry I've been brought it up. Additionally, any development that increases impervious areas over that which is permitted by the zone. It's on, it's on the eighth page of the ordinance.
Yeah, uh, I think, uh, I, I would say I think the five thousand one, the four hundred that kind of concerns me because that is, uh, uh, and again, the right direction, but we may end up creating a big burden for our residents. So it's the four hundred square feet of impervious area that kind of is a little bit more concerning for me.
Which would be about a twenty by twenty pad.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Could I? Can we table this and send it back to have that looked at again before we voted, vote on it?
If, if I can, in line, in line with the councilman's question and some of the questions that have been, been raised about this to give just a, a procedural input here. Uh, the, any land use ordinance, as many of you know, uh, when it's, uh, introduced by the council, it then comes to the planning board for review and commentary. Uh, going back to the issue brought up by, I think by Bruce about question of, you know, what juris, whose jurisdiction and what is our power? Here our power, your power is simply, uh, uh, review and advice. So it can, it would go back with review and advice to the council for council action. There's no action that you act, that you take as a planning board to say the ordinance is good or bad. Really what you're doing is making commentary on it. So if you want to make comment with regard to the four hundred foot issue that some people have brought up, that comment can be sent back to the council. Um, and then it ultimately, it's, uh, any ordinance is really in a hundred percent of the council's purview to move forward on.
Good. So then we can, we can advise or request that the council review the four hundred square foot requirement.
Actually, this is, this Tom, uh, there's an entire, uh, paragraph called minor development on page eight. Of, of the thing, and it, it even moves into a major development. Any development that increases impervious over that which is permitted by the zone. So even if it's a one foot, one square foot, uh, increase over what's permitted. So if you have, if you have a, a house, as we have had in the, in the planning board and in the board of adjustment, where there isn't room left in the, uh, in their building envelope or in their, uh, their coverage, their impervious coverage, and they want to put a deck. Uh, you know, we had that whole development over just south of eighty where they built out the, the impervious and the building coverage and didn't have a deck or even a balcony for the sliding doors. And so that would make them, and turn into a major development, a simple desire to put in stairs to make the place safe. So I, I think that this has to be done carefully. I, I agree that it is useful for us to be very careful about impervious coverage because we have wells for our source of water. And we have to be very careful about making sure that we maximize the amount of flow percolation of water into our system. But I think this takes away from many of our residents' ability to enjoy their properties uh, in, in perfectly reasonable and useful ways. So I, I, I think there, there's a little bit of devil in these details here that has to be carefully, uh, examined.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, uh, maybe for the, the planner or the engineer.
Go ahead, Mr. Fasieri.
Uh, I was looking at the, uh, at the ordinance, if I get back to it. And, uh, the definition, uh, maybe you could tell me, uh, which page. I guess it's, we're spending a lot of time on page eight and here I am. And the, the definition, and maybe you could give some examples for us. A surface that has been covered with a layer of material that is highly resistant to infiltration by water. Okay, is that a patio made out of pavers with sand spacing? Is that concrete, what are, what are some of the, you, you know, just as it's written right now, what do, what would we be, uh, limiting?
Are you looking under minor or major? Just I'm on that same page.
That's a good, thank you for asking. Um, I am, I guess in the, I'm at the top of the page there. Andrew, uh, second full paragraph, impervious surface.
Yeah.
Yeah. A surface that has been covered with a layer of material so that it is highly resistant to infiltration by water.
Yeah. And what they tried to do in that, that, that kind of came out of the state requirements where, um, for a long time since the two thousand four, um, impervious surface is considered concrete or asphalt or pavers. Um, well, and pavers could go either way, impervious or not, if they had spaces in them. And gravel, uh, packed dirt, um, and the like were not considered impervious. They've made the change that that type of material, I think the state regulation, this, this definition is slightly different. Um, the state regulation says any, any, uh, motor vehicle surface, um, would be, and any surface, even if it's packed dirt, uh, cars running at it all the time would be considered impervious. So this definition, um, it would highly resistance infiltration. So a, any kind of packed surface. So, um, yeah, so it's to your point, it could be pavers, it could be gravel, it could be DGA, it could be packed dirt. Um, anything that's, that's resistant to the water getting back into the ground.
But I'm not sure that it would include a deck. What do you think, Andrew? Uh, water can still infiltrate through.
Well, in the Parsippany deck, uh, ordinance, I think deck is impervious.
I know. I think it doesn't consider it impervious.
I, I've always, I've always had my personal issue with that because decks normally have a few gaps and spaces. And it's normally either a stone or just a, a loose dirt underneath there and it does infiltrate. But the Parsipony ordinance, as well as many others, uh, consider a deck impervious. So a deck would be impervious, um, without, without question.
As would a swimming pool.
As would a swimming pool, as would a, you know, anything over four hundred square feet expansive of a driveway. Um, and just to be clear, uh, under, I think it was page thirty-four, section ninety-eight was the requirement for a major development. And that basically is like they have in many towns, um, although the threshold appears to be a little bit lower than, than other towns is, um, the need for seepage pits, uh, you'll, you would install, if you're making an addition on your home or expanding your home, they would ask that you have to install seepage pits. And at face value, i- it is not a face value. It, they are a benefit to get the water to recharge into the ground. There, there's, there's no doubt, um, provided you have good soil conditions. Sometimes you don't have good soil conditions. Sometimes you have a high water table. Um, sometimes it causes a mounding problem against the house or to another, uh, facility. So it, it, it could get complicated. And, um, even though the, the, the language in the ordinance says soil test is not required, um, state BMP rules and, and good practice, you should know what you're putting your seepage pit into the ground. So you, you have to do, at a minimum requires, you know, construction equipment, excavators and, and some, some pre-construction evaluation to see what you got in the ground. Um, so it, as I mentioned, I keep mentioning, it's a double edged sword. And, and I agree with the board, uh, that, you know, I, I, I think it could use some consideration of when, um, it gets implemented. And if there's discretion, um, particularly for minor development that we, we would not necessarily see at this board, um, of the township engineer being able to, uh, and I think there is language in here that the township engineer has the authority to require or, or, or waive the, the requirement depending on, um, their, their, their judgment. I remember that on the original, that language was in there, that, um, if it made sense to put it in, the law was, was there, the ordinance was there to, to, um, to support the engineer. Um, and then if, if it didn't make sense, they, 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 the engineer could, could, could waive it, um, and, uh, not, not need to put in these seepage pits.
I still think that, uh, we, we got, we covered a lot of material here, uh, Andrew.
Yeah.
But the, the basic concern for some of us is four hundred square feet is ridiculous.
I, I, I was of the same, I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
So Andrew, along that lines though, um, I went down to review page twenty-five, uh, section two twenty-five dash ninety-eight, which is where the requirements for the minor development. And this is where I could use some of your feedback. Are these things that a normal landscape contractor would be able to handle on their own? Or are these things that require additional work?
Well, they're big tanks. There are several tons. They're eight foot diameter. They're, they're, they're a large concrete drainage infrastructure. Um, tanks.
I- is that what's being required for the minor development?
Yes.
Uh, but actually doesn't it say seepage pits or other infiltration device?
Yes, other infiltration device. Um, yeah, which could be a large diameter perforated pipe, um, or other, um, you know, other type, uh, devices. Um.
French drains, something along that line.
Well, they have to be of a good size, um, to capture the, the, the required runoff of the three inches of runoff. Um, and they vary. It depends, it, it, the size, the location, the depth is, is, you know, how the site, uh, would best be suited for it. And, and, you know, you want to go with the most economical method. Um, but yeah, there, there, you, you do have to put in this, this infrastructure. And, and maybe it's a, um, typically, uh, a, a, a smaller rain garden wo- wouldn't be enough to, to, um, for the rate and volume control. Um, typically it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, good sized diameter perforated pipe or a stone pit, uh, with filter fabric or a, a seepage pit.
Andrew, would a dry well be one of those?
A dry well, seepage pit, uh, the term is used interchangeably, but a- a- and, and that could be, it, it's basically a void in the ground. It could be a, a, a concrete tank. It could be a piece of a, a, a large diameter perforated pipe. Uh, it could just be a, a stone. Uh, you, you dig out the soil and replace it with a stone bed. That stone has a void ratio. And it has it stated here thirty-three percent, which is, um, um, you know, the, the, there's, there's space for water to go in between zone. And, uh, so there's various methods that the, the, and, and that's where you get into the engineering of it and, and the, uh, and the cost. Because, um, a tank cause, has the most volume but costs the most. Uh, a stone is probably the cheapest, but you're only getting thirty-three percent of the volume of the area. So it, it's, it's, and, and what we find depth is always the biggest issue because once you start to hit the water table, um, there's, there's steady pool of water there and you're not getting your volume. So you, you have to be above the water table. Um, and, uh, so that's always something to be cognizant of. Um, and in some cases there's ledge rock, um, where you can't get any infiltration and you can't, you know, there's another thing, another consideration. So not to say you can't do it, but there is a cause and effect. The, the, you're trying to get the water back in the ground, but, but it, it, we have to be, I, I, in my opinion, we should be cognizant of the, the cost and effort that it would, that it may take on these smaller projects.
Yeah, and I, my reason for asking was that, you know, if these, uh, requirements aren't, aren't substantially different than what a, a homeowner would be, or responsible homeowner would be engaging with a licensed, uh, landscape contractor anyway, then I, I think it would, I think it's okay that it's four hundred square feet. But if this is putting an extra burden of some significance, then it, it makes sense that we should, we should, um, you know, say to council that, that, uh, some additional looking at, at that, um, requirement should be considered.
Andrew, if, if I can, going to that, uh, section ninety-eight, it indicates on there that single lot, single family properties do not need to submit a maintenance plan, but shall maintain their stormwater management measures in accordance with the maintenance guidelines described in the NJDEP BMP manual.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it says, single lots, single family properties are exempt from the soil testing requirements.
Yes, those are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So i- i- in effect, that, does that, was that meant to mean that, that those properties are, um, you know, my, my own personal residence, your personal residence? When we put on that patio, you're still requiring the measure, you're still requiring the measures, but not the additional steps with regard to the maintenance?
Um, it looks like.
Does that mean to you, Andrew, as an engineer?
It, it means that the effort that it takes to prepare the manual, and it's, 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 can't be done by your typical land, it, it prob, an engineer would have to prepare the manual. Uh, it's, it's, it's not requiring the man to be prepared. However, it is requiring that the homeowner follow the standards in the state, uh, DEP standard manual, which really comes down to maintaining your, your, your structures. If, if it's, if it's a, uh, a, a basin or a, a rain garden or a French drain or a seepage pit, there is some basic maintenance you have to do. Um, so that's not too, uh, burdensome. Um, and section B where it says does not, um, um, it's not required for the soil. It's, this section contains a minimum design for, for minor development somewhere. It said about the soil. Um, exempt from the soil testing requirements. The state full soil testing requirements are very, uh, restrictive and very difficult and very expensive. Um, typical soil testing is about eight thousand dollars. Typical soil testing is about eight thousand dollars, even for simple testing. So this is very good that it does not require that. But even though it doesn't, does not require the, 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 the state level soil testing, some minimal testing of where the groundwater is should be done. And that, that could be done. Sometimes it's done at time of construction, so, and, and in accordance with the township engineer. Sometimes it's done in advance if the store, if the township engineer thinks it's necessary. So, and, and we're talking about the single family home lock rating plan applications, not the planning board applications in these cases.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Fageri.
Go ahead, Mr. Fageri.
Thank you, sir. Do, do we know what, I don't know if this is again, a question for, for Susan or Andrew. What the wor- you know, just, what's the worst case scenario? If all the homes in town opted to do a four hundred foot patio or so, you know, take up four hundred feet with impervious, whatever they do with it. What, what would it do to our, our townwide permeability? You know, because I, I, I hear both sides of this article and we may not have that information, you know? And it, it is sort of like a worst case scenario, but we're all speaking in hypotheticals here. So I, I thought it would be interesting. Judy, can you have an answer?
It's not, it's not hypothetical. We are already built out. And impervious coverage is a problem. So it's not a hypothetical. We are already there. We are of already, our water quality is already ruined. So, you know, they're talking about stormwater utility or this. We're talking about increased storms. And, and it's just going to get worse. So we've got to do something and people have to take ownership somehow. And maybe we have to do it in phases like Priya was saying. But it's not a matter of, you know, we just want to do this for our town. This is a, this is a state issue. And, and we are built out completely. So we have to think either doing something like this, doing some form of this or educating people, or there's going to be a stormwater utility. Because how are we going to pay for all the storms and damage, the flooding? Parsippany is kind of far behind and we've let a lot of our major developments like Water View go in the wrong way. So this is serious and it already passed council. So I mean, I guess we can make some changes and send it back, but this was supposed to be adopted in March. And I'll put myself on mute.
No one's talking about rejecting this ordinance. I think the only thing we're concerned about is the, the individual homeowner who wants to put a, a wooden deck on their house. And this is going to cause problems for them. The four hundred square foot is, is, is the only issue, you know, primarily that we were concerned about. Raise that number to some more reasonable number. I don't know what that would be. My deck is, is twenty-five by eighteen. And it's, it's, it's got slats and the water runs through the slats to the ground. And this ordinance would make it difficult for someone to even do that. What we're looking for is this, is, is to make life more bearable for the residents if they want to put a deck on their house.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes, I was just going to say that maybe we should revisit what is considered impermeable. You know, a deck that allows for the infiltration of water through it should not be counted as impermeable.
And we would have to change the township, the law, the existing ordinance to do that, which I agree with, by the way.
You know, so if, and, and the, the, the thing that I really disagree with in that minor development is not so much the four hundred square feet. It's the fact that even one additional foot above what's permitted in the zone. For the four hundred square feet, if you have the open space that you haven't covered with your, your house. I mean, I'm, I live in a R three. And most houses have covered a decent amount of the land, but we have, usually have enough money, uh, uh, land left to put in four hundred square feet. I think that, that if we can find ways to get people to, if they are going to put in something impermeable, that it not run the water off to the street, but that it, it goes to something where it still infiltrates into the ground. I'm, I'm just saying that it, that, that it's not a simple task, but there are some simple answers such as the decking not being considered impermeable as long as it's made out of slats or whatever that would allow the water to run through.
And the paver thing too.
Well, pavers, but, but you and I both have been approached. We know that pavers can become impermeable. So that has to be careful. We have to be careful with that. So we have to, if we do allow to count against, to not be considered impermeable, we may have to have an engineer tell us what, how we can place those pavers so that they would not over time become impermeable.
That's a fair point.
You know, it's, I, I, this is one where I think we are potentially putting an enormous burden on regular residents in small plots of lands for their homes. And at the same time, I completely agree with Judy that we have to do a better job of allowing the water to infiltrate into our, into our water tables.
All right. Susan, was there something you wanted to add?
Well, I was just going to summarize what we may not be done, but just to, I have three points that it sounds like there are concerns with that we could pass along to council. First is that the definition of development with the feeling that four hundred square feet is too strict. There was concern about what, what Mr. Dinsmore was just saying. You know, making something a, a major development if it's, if it's at all over what's allowable by zoning. And then lastly was the concern about the definition of impervious surface, what, what is and is not. You heard what, how I feel about decks. There may be others. I, I think pavers do tend to become impervious very quickly, e- even if they're pervious pavers. But certainly if they're traditional pavers that people lay as patios with, with sand in between, those generally are pretty impervious.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, there are pervious pavers that, you know, you have to like vacuum from time to time to make sure that they're still, you know, infiltrating and maintenance is an issue there. But those were the three areas that I, I heard concern about. If there are others. I, I don't know, Joe, what, what you think the approach here, we could summarize these in a short memo to the council. Transmit that back.
So my practice with these type of reviews, because there's no real action taken by the board, is that I, in the past, have sent correspondence. I mean, it's April nineteenth and the council's supposed to review this before our next meeting.
Day after our next meeting.
Okay, well, what we, what I, what I can do is I can send to the town clerk and to township and copy township attorney. Respondence in essence identifying the areas of concern raised by the planning board and asking for the council to take it under consideration as part of their second reading. And obviously, we happen to have a councilman on the planning board who obviously will know exactly what was said in the planning board and likewise can echo the, the comments and concerns by the planning board. And obviously, members of the planning board who have their own comments can feel free to attend the township council meeting and be heard as part of the public hearing. But there is no vote to be taken, so effectively I can send a letter identifying the areas of concern.
Susan, can I just add another comment? Think of the definition of impervious surfaces. I wonder whether there are mitigation measures that we can go look at too, right? Because when you look at the minor disturbance, the mitigation measures, I think, could be another way to address it where we end up looking at what's the.
Go ahead and finish, Priya.
Okay, no, that's all.
Okay. I, I was going to say also, I think the, the key here is that we, we're concerned that this creates an overly burdensome requirement for individual homeowners. And I think that's, you know, divided into those three areas that were discussed, but specifically focused on, on homeowners.
Correct.
Okay.
Question real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Nepal Tano.
Thank you. So if the limit is four hundred and say someone puts a three hundred square foot deck on their house this year. And then the following year they do a three hundred square foot patio. Now did they hit the four hundred square feet or that counts as two different projects? So now, now we're going. And then suddenly they could do something else and they're over the, you know, a larger sheds. Now they're, they're, they're a thousand square feet. So is there a way to put in, in there? I, I don't know how to, how to put that in, I mean, our attorney if I figure that out, but is there, is there a cap number of, of projects, so to speak? You know, a combined square footage.
So, so what, what you, what, what you're in essence talking about, Mr. Nepal Tano, is an aggregation provision that within a certain number of years that the, the expansion is considered in the aggregate. So somebody who may be an attorney and wants to put on a patio, not to cast dispersions on my profession, but would put on a three hundred ninety-nine foot patio and then add three ninety-nine and three ninety-nine. And that is obviously very sneaky and you probably want to capture that scenario. So that would in essence be an aggre- aggregation clause, which I can put in the comments as well.
Yeah, it, it's a good point. I mean, it, it says, it says individually or collectively results in four hundred square feet, but Andrew, I don't know, maybe you're going here as well. There's not a whole lot of detail given as to how, how that collectively is determined. Is it as of the ordinance, anything after that, or is it one at a time?
It, it's clearly defined, and that was one of the big pushes of the state major development changes. And, and it's clearly defined since two thousand four, when you're major development. But for a minor, like you just mentioned, Susan, it, it is much more vague of when, you know, collectively, individually, collectively results in it. So it's, it's, it appears they've taken a step to put the word collectively in there to avoid the three hundred and the, and the one hundred or, or three hundred. And then this year and, and another couple hundred the following year with the collectively. But if you just looked above that under the major, it says creation of one or more quarterly or more regulated services since February two thousand four. So they don't, they want it to be collective. They don't want to go over a certain hard number. You know, this year, next year, the following year. So the word collectively is in the minor that, that could be enforced, but it is, it is vague.
Okay. So Mr. Wenzel, do you have what you need at this point? Okay, affirmative. Are there any details from the planning board members that you feel we have not covered sufficiently at this point? That you'd like to have added? All right, seeing no, nobody speaking up. I think we'll consider this matter closed then for today's meeting and, and move forward with the next item on the agenda.
Can I ask a question first about wildlife preserves? Susan knows that.
We're, we're not closing the meeting yet, but we do have one more item on the agenda, so.
But we, we adjourned the wildlife preserves, but I have a question. Tomorrow night, the town council is going to be passing two ordinances regarding the Highlands Regional Master Plan. And Wildlife Preserves wanted to get this application in before the, the council adopted those wildlife preservation ordinances. Does, does this application, even though they, they filed it and then adjourned it, does this grandfather them? It does.
Yeah, councilman, they, they, they were grandfathered the moment the application was determined complete. It's a month or so ago, I think. So regardless of whether they were heard tonight or adjourned later, they, they were already grandfathered.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, that, that, that determination is based on completeness, not necessarily when they're heard.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so turning to the last item on the agenda is the vehicle charging ordinance referral. So Mr. Mandell, would you like to speak about this?
Okay. If you recall, I guess a couple of meetings back, we discussed the need for ordinances to control the EV charging stations and also for incorporating the requirement to put in the circuitry for single and two-family homes when they're under construction. And Councilman D. Piero said it would be great if we actually had a proposed ordinance to put before the town council versus just the bare bones. And so I through Susan's help, this is the, primarily the Berkeley Heights ordinance, which in Word you can search and replace. So Berkeley Heights got replaced by Parsippany Troy Hills. And I also altered several of the numbers and so on and also incorporated the requirement for the single and two-family homes to have the circuitry to install a level two charger if and when they wanted to. The only comment I had was one from the chairman concerning my draconian rule that if you overstayed at the charging station, you'd get towed away immediately. So in the version that you have in front of you, that has been modified. And that's where it stands and I'll answer any questions.
Do you know, have any idea how much it will cost for homes? If they don't have any cars now that need a charging station, do they have to provide circuitry for it? What that would cost them?
In a new construction, they would have to. In the existing home, no.
What about an existing home with a major renovation?
That's a, that's a good point. I would assume that if they did a major renovation of a garage, they'd have to install the circuitry. But again, if you look at that, the installation during constructions, you know, I've been told is around three to five hundred dollars. If after construction you want to put it in, they're talking any place from five hundred to three, four thousand dollars. So it's a significant saving for whoever is in the home when they have to put in the charger, which at the rate we're going, I don't know. Maybe I'm attuned to it, but I would say every day I see two or three articles about electric vehicles, companies coming on board, new charging stations. It's, it's here and it's coming and it's coming rapidly. So I, I don't look upon that as, you know, like on the last discussion, I don't think it's a tremendous imposition on new construction to incorporate this. It would be after the fact.
Yeah, I'd be aligned with you on absolutely new construction, but I am concerned a little bit about what the threshold for remodeled might be. And, and before you answer that, Stephen, I think Mr. Dinsmore has a question.
I was just going to ask what, what the current building code requirements are for electric service into a home if a, a major renovation is done. I mean, I've been in homes that have hundred, hundred amp circuit breaker boxes, services that, that probably would have difficulty handling a level two charging process, but almost everybody I know that has done any electrical work has moved up to at least a two hundred amp. has moved up to at least a two hundred amp box. And that should really have no difficulty. That's like having a, an electric dryer in your home. You can, you can get away with the level two station coming off of what's basically a dryer circuit. You might need a little more than that, but you're still talking, you know, thirty to forty amps at the most.
You're correct, Tom. And in fact, I'll tell you, when I I had my electric service redone, I don't know, maybe a half a dozen years ago, and I went up to two hundred amp service. And I don't have an electric dryer and I don't have an electric vehicle charger.
Right, but I think that's, I think that's standard now. The, I don't know if it's required by the state that a home have a two hundred amp service. But I don't know of anybody that hasn't put in a two hundred amp service whenever they've done any sort of significant upgrade, and that should handle a level two charging station.
I want to make it clear, we're talking about two hundred twenty volt sixty amp is what's being required. So.
If you have the two hundred, two hundred amp box, you should be able to handle a sixty amp unless you have competing services. So I mean, I think that, I think this is a great ordinance. I think the questions that Councilman Di Piero asked are right to the point of what kind of burden we're putting on people in their homes. But I, I think, because I know that the level two isn't always the sixty amp. You can have a forty amp version of it. You want a sixty amp version of it. I've, you know, my son has a Model Three. Actually, a Model Y now. He upgraded it from Tesla. And, and when he goes to his mother-in-law's house, he plugs it into their dryer outlet, which is a thirty amp service, and he gets a pretty darn good charge in pretty good order. You know, it's not, not perfect, obviously, but it's, it's still there. And a two hundred amp service can handle a sixty amp outlet. Yes, you have to have a have some electrician come in to make sure that it's set up right, obviously. And if you do have a lot of other draws on that service, you may need to go further. But I think the average homeowner is not gonna, gonna have a problem with that.
So in, in line with dealing with average homeowners, what, do we have a definition in town of what classifies a, a major remodel versus you know, maybe a minor one so that we know where, where a, where this would kick in?
I don't do, Chairman. If somebody else was jumping in.
Oh, you, you tell us what you know.
That's about all I know. I don't, I don't think we do. And then I was just looking in the ordinance to see what the, if it says anything about a threshold.
Susan, does the ordinance require a certain current load into the house?
Bear with me, I'm just. I don't see anything beyond just the two hundred twenty volt sixty amp and anything newer or modeled. So, you know, that's a good point. What is that threshold? I don't have the answer to that. It could be something we're talking with the, the building department, housing. That maybe it's a dollar amount, you know, that's how, that's how flood, flood insurance works, you know, a certain percentage of the dollar value of the home.
I just want to make sure if somebody's doing something that doesn't involve their electrical, that they're not then needing to bring in electrical and over and above.
Right, right. I have some concerns about enforcement on single family. And I'm just not sure. I think we'd have to get some opinion from the township attorney perhaps on, you know, who, who does this? Because the planning board almost never sees single family homes unless they're new construction associated with subdivisions. The zoning board sees that connection with variances. So what would be the mechanism for for, you know, Jen Beale's, one of her many departments, probably housing, I guess, to, you know, to acquire this and, and, you know, are they able to do that? Do they have the staffing? Do they have the mechanism? So that would be concern on the single family and two-family.
Yeah, and I'd like him clear, I think this is a great ordinance also. I think the only caveat there is I'd want to make sure that all new constructions are accounted for. But I'd love to make sure that any tear downs that are just being put on the same footprint are also accounted for. So how do we account for those, you know, major renovations, if you want to call it that, or, or tear downs are being included?
I think, I think teardown would, because that would be completely new construction. But the question is, what, what is that definition of a major? What is the threshold?
This is a, Bruce here, there has to be language around that we could take a look at. This can't be the first time someone, you know, a planning board has said, how do we define, you know, various levels of reconstruction, renovation, what have you? Somewhere between, obviously, I mean, teardown seems pretty obvious to me. You're starting, pretty much starting from scratch. Somewhere, you know, north of that is where, you know, there, I'm sure there's a reasonable line there. If you're renovating a garage, you know, my thinking is if somebody puts this in, puts one of these in, they're gonna get their money back. I'm not saying we should necessarily make them do it. If they're only renovating a garage, maybe, but if they do, they're gonna get their money back. It's just gonna be in the, in the purchase price from whoever buys a home from them.
Yeah, and, you know, to be clear, this is just the circuitry so that they could do a, a charger. We're not asking them to put in a charger.
Right.
Be clear on that one. That was a good point, John. Nice job. So we're just telling them in order, you know, to, you're gonna construct a new home, you must put a two hundred and twenty volt outlet in your garage. And then down the road, if they ever get an electric vehicle, then they have to buy the charger that's totally separate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But, but the thing is, you then buy the charger, which is, I think Tesla charges five hundred dollars for the their little box. But you won't have the, at that point, the three thousand dollar electrical job.
Understood.
In the meantime, you could have, you could have a second refrigerator like many do. Steve, I had a couple more comments and questions beyond the ones that I had put in Marvyn's, which I think everybody probably saw. So I was, we were actually talking about this internally at my office today. There was, there was some excitement about EV charging ordinance. Because we're in New Jersey, but not as much in New York. So my colleagues were very interested. And two questions came up. One, why, why would we not allow level threes in any zoning district? Not to say that, you know, a typical homeowner is going to install that, but is it an issue if they do? Or is it an issue if a use that, for example, in a single family zone, but is not a single family house? Do we want to prevent them from installing a level three if they so desired? And it made me think of houses of worship, which are often in single family zones. You know, I could see if, you know, if a church wanted to install a charging station in their parking lot, either for the use of their parishioners or lease it out when the parking lot's not being used, could be a revenue. Is that a concern? Is that something we would not want? Or are we open to that? So that was one question. And then the other is, do we have a sense of, of the multifamily where I think we're, the ordinance would require twenty-five percent of the spaces to be pre-wired? Do we have a sense of what that cost is for, for a developer to do that pre-wiring? And I don't know if you know the answer to that, Steve.
No, not really, but to run the cable would not be horrendous before they paved over the parking lot. I'm assuming that that's all they would do is run the cable. They would not be installing the charges. Now, back to your other one about level three. Level three is typically four eighty volts. So I guess that's the, the reason that the, the ordinance, you know, did not want that in a residential area. But I understand that your comment, that's an interesting comment about the house of worship. You know, like using the steeple for the cellphone. It may be a good revenue source for a house of worship. Because level three are pay-as-you-go typically.
I, I would say in terms of the level three charger, that's something where we would want probably the utility to be, have some level of approval on that. Because of the, the drain that would take on the infrastructure of, of that block in the same way that they have to be involved with solar. But I think it's definitely worth, you know, creating, creating the room for it to be allowed.
Did anybody else? Thoughts or questions?
Yeah, Chairman. Questions that your coworkers have. I'd be curious.
Oh, they, they were really interested and they actually thought it was a great idea to require, you know, without getting into the numbers and the specific requirements, but requiring the pre-wiring, because the feeling is that, you know, in a lot, a lot of places, the technology's maybe not quite there, or at least the demand is not quite there. I think we're maybe just under three percent of total vehicles are, are electric at this point. Although they increased something like forty percent last year during a pandemic, which is really something. But anyway, the feeling is that there is going to be some time before they're, you know, quite widespread. But if we're already equipped, then that's really helpful. So, yeah, they were, they thought that was an intriguing idea.
Well, the reason for that is, you know, the developments that we've been approving, these are gonna be around for twenty to thirty years. And, you know, the number we've been given is like twenty thirty-five, which is only fifteen years. Basically, you're only gonna be able to buy an electric vehicle. So it's not ridiculous to ask. And then the, the question is, well, why not require all the spaces? Because not every vehicle has to charge every day. The, the typical vehicles that are coming out now have two hundred plus miles in them. The average person is driving thirty to fifty miles a day. So theoretically, you'd have to charge once every four days.
Yeah, and who knows what kinds of advancements we'll see in between now and.
Oh, well, that's.
Yeah.
If you could tell me that, I'll know what stock to buy.
Yeah, hopefully they become a lot more affordable.
Yeah.
That's a big part of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's Andrew. I have a couple comments. I reviewed the ordinance and I, I went through and I also was speaking with a coworker of mine that was familiar with, there's a state assembly ordinance, proposed ordinance. I think it's A twenty-one oh eight. That's, I guess, hopefully will be adopted this year, or at least put up for a vote. It's A twenty-one oh eight that, that talks to EV charging stations. And with regard to pre-wiring makes perfect sense. Even running conduit in advance makes perfect sense. My comments and concerns are more regarding the implications of, of the parking. For example, on multifamily residential site improvement standards, state DCA governs parking for residential multifamily projects. The parking count can't, has to be in compliance with, or the requirements for parking. So and I, I'm just bringing this up consideration. If the township adopts an ordinance requiring EV stations on, on multifamily residential, and it, and it doesn't meet the requirements of RSAS, the, the RSS would, would supersede the town ordinance. However, the good news, reason why I brought up the, the state assembly bill is they addressed that issue and they say, you know, upon adoption of this, this bill, that the site improvement advisory board would have ninety days to modify and update RSAS to be compliant with, with, with the ordinance. So, so they're looking to update RSAS based on the state ordinance. And I wanted to bring up a couple of things on the state ordinance. It has, it looks like, generally speaking, much fewer spaces required. I'm not saying if they need fewer or more spaces, but their ordinance is slightly, is somewhat different. So that would be an interesting read, I think. And then my other question regarding the timing, I was trying to work this out in my head. The, the, the timing, if there's a timing restriction, twenty-four hours, eight hours would have you for a level two. That, you couldn't use that as, as a full-time parking stall for a resident because they wouldn't be able, if to follow, unless the, as it's written, they couldn't stay there. They'd have to move the vehicle. And for example, it would have to then for a multifamily or commercial, particularly multifamily, it'd have to be placed in the visitor or common area stalls where you would only move your electric vehicle there to charge. And then when it wasn't charging, even it was an electric vehicle, you couldn't park it there. You'd have to park it overnight elsewhere. So there's some considerations that have to be thought about because you may, you, you may have a bank of unused parking EV charging stations because not every, once your car is charged, you can't leave it there as it's written. So that may have to be looked at a little bit more. And particularly the, the one on the twenty-five percent, if they were to go to pre-conduit, pre-wire or pre-conduit, twenty-five percent of the banks, those parking spaces would really be temporary spaces if, if the timing restriction was in there because you couldn't stay and park there on a permanent basis if you're a resident or, or even in a, in a shopping center. So it, it, it has to be looked at a little bit closer with the timing and, and the restrictions on that. So that's, I just wanted to, you know, bring those kind of concerns I was thinking of out, out to the open there. Thanks.
I would say, you know, with regard to the private multifamily residentials, I think there is a, a line in there which basically says that the managers of those properties will have the freedom to choose how they regulate that space. And my way of thinking, that's, that's appropriate. So if, if they want to allow somebody to be in that space full-time, you know, it's not what we're, we're hoping they will do, but you know, that's for them to choose how to manage it.
Okay.
And my thought on that, Andrew, is that, you know, I pull in and I I plug in, I get there at five o'clock in the evening, I plug in at ten o'clock at night, I go down and I move it because somebody else is gonna use the spot. Now, that's Pollyanna, I'm sure, but.
Oh, I'm wondering about the two AM changeover.
Well, if the kid wakes up and needs a diaper changed, I guess he can go change the car too.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Anil.
Go ahead, Anil.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, right? The, in general, this is an amazing initiative, right? This ordinance about going green, right? And like, like other speakers have spoken about how this is coming so fast and rapidly. So I think we should be prepared for that. So I totally agree with, you know, implementing, you know, enforcing, in fact, not enforcing for multifamily, commercial, parking spaces, you know, in any big parking lots, office spaces, you know, all of those kind of things. And I think I'm just a little bit concerned about the single family enforcement. Um, and I think, I'm just a little bit concerned about the single family, um, enforcement, um. And I'm more concerned about how will we enforce that, right? Because, um, it doesn't even come to us. And, um, I'm not sure if township would have resources to actually enforce that, um, that type of thing. So. Plus, I think there was one comment, I think you made that is. The burden we are putting on the single family owners, right? Um, is that reasonable as well? So, so other than that, a little bit of concern, um. I have in full support of this ordinance. Yeah, that's why I make that comment, yeah.
Anil, as far as the township enforcing, if you're building a house, you have to submit the plans and the. The plans don't show that you have the circuitry, then the plans don't get approved. They're not gonna go into the house and check, though actually they will, when you go for your certificate of occupancy.
Okay. All right, as long as that's a, you know, implement, you know, enforceable process, right? I feel to be built a new process that just becomes too much a burden on township as well.
Well, but it's, it's just like now, if you go to build a house, you have to submit the plans. And if anything is. Different than what the code is, your plans get rejected.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, Steve, uh, what, you, you've received some comments from the board. Um, I, I think, you know, mine in particular. Um, was, uh, with regard to the renovation part of it, um, or remodel part. But, uh, what would you like to do from here?
Uh, I think it's time to let, you know, bring it to the town council. Uh, the renovation, I'd like some guidance either from our attorney or from the other professionals as that, you know. What is renovation? If, uh, if you're just doing your kitchen. But if you're adding a garage, I would assume that that would trigger it, in my own mind. If you're remodeling your kitchen. Remodeling bathroom, but if you're adding a garage. You know, I, I need help from the professionals on that definition.
I think that's fair. Uh, one thing I would be careful of is, I think you've gotten this to a good enough level of detail. Uh, because now, now the council is gonna wanna discuss it, and they're gonna have different opinions than us. And ultimately, their opinions are the ones that will supersede everything. So, uh, I, I, I think there's been some comments that have been offered to you that are worth, um, making edits. Um, but certainly I'd say for, you know, definitely talk to Mr. Wenzel and, and Andrew and Susan. Um, a- and I think then that you're ready to present. Um, Mr. Wenzel, do you have any other comments?
Well, yeah, just, just in terms of procedure, just to remember, and we've said this before, in fact, we. Experienced it just with the past stormwater ordinance. Uh, any ordinance, any land use ordinance is going to be introduced by the council. And then is gonna come to the planning board for review. So even though this ordinance is in its infancy stage here at the planning board. It's gonna come back for your review after the council does its review. And obviously, they may make many or few tweaks and changes to it. Uh, I would, uh, it would be my suggestion from a procedural standpoint. Uh, that, uh, if, if Mr. Mandell has any changes. Or any, uh, clarifications he wants to make in that document. Uh, he should do so before it's sent to council. Uh, because I'm sure that council is going to likewise have similar questions. So, uh, I think it would be most appropriate to send them, uh, as complete a, a proposed document as possible. Now, there is no jurisdiction by the planning board to submit an ordinance to the council. Uh, other than, um, in this informal context. Uh, so there is no, uh, need, and I think this is now the second time I'm saying this. There is no need for a vote or any type of procedure at the planning board. Uh, you are simply giving a sense of the committee, uh, to Mr. Mandell. For Mr. Mandell then to be, uh, the delivery vehicle, uh, up to, up to the council. So I think, uh, Mr. Mandell has heard the concerns. Uh, I think he can certainly, uh, make, uh, corrections or, uh, clarifications. And then, uh, that can be sent up to council. Uh, either through my office, I would be more than happy to do that as a correspondence through my office. To the clerk and township attorney. Uh, and then it will be up to the council to, to introduce it.
There. Uh, Judy.
By the way, to answer Mr. Mandell's question about, you know, what, uh. What the, what the definition of, uh, reconstruction is. Uh, it's the, I'll give you the old line, it's whatever you say it is, it is. Um, because it's an ordinance and you can, within reason, uh, define those things. So, uh, once again, I think Mr. Mandell has, uh, his marching orders and he can proceed accordingly.
All right. Uh, Judy.
Uh, Judy.
Um. At that council meeting, the green team, Matthew Kavanaugh, was going to be presenting on. On EVs for any questions. Would that pose a problem? Mr. Wenzel, I guess I'm asking you.
Uh, i- 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 in a legal, legal sense?
Since we're like hashing things out here and then it's gonna go there. I mean, I, I guess not. I guess it's just. More of this kind of discussion.
Right. So, so just, just so we're all clear, once again. The, 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 the actual formal process is an introduction of an ordinance by the council. Sent to the planning board for review and comment. Then back to the town council to hold a second reading slash hearing and then enactment. Now, that's the, that's the, the, the structure. Now, there is no requirement. I'm getting feedback here. Uh, there's no, there's, there's permission, I should say, on the council. Having this about it or hearing from the party. Or in this sense, a proposed ordinance from another, another, uh, organization within the, within township. So if someone's gonna present and there's gonna be some information presented to the council, then that's fine. And perhaps that would be better for them to hear that. And then have the ordinance in front of them at the next meeting. So this way they're primed. To, 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 to have a better, more fruitful discussion, because quite honestly. It's a brand-new area for a lot of people. And that type of information may be helpful for them to then understand the strictures of the ordinance that Mr. Mandell has.
Okay.
Joe, would it be, would it be my correct understanding of the, sorry, the process? Is that, you know, Steve or, or perhaps members of the green team or jointly, whoever would, would make a sort of an informal presentation of the ordinance. Uh, to council. If council wanted to proceed, then they would direct the township attorney to. You know, work on the ordinance, make sure that it's got all the correct references, uh, you know, it's basically clean and, and then, uh, schedule the, or introduce it for first reading. Would that be? Potential order of things?
Yeah, i- i- it, Susan, you're absolutely right. That, that can be, once again. Yeah, it can be one of those means to achieve the same procedure.
I mean, once, actually, once it's in the council's hands, they, they can do with it what they will. Uh, and, and the township, then it's in the township attorneys, you know, sort of clean up and, and, you know, get it ready for introduction. Um, and then as, as Joe said, you'll see it when it comes back for consistency, determination, review.
Yeah, and the intention of this is, is not much different than what we've done for master plan consistency. When, when, uh, the new master plan was put forward and there were a number of ordinances which. Needed some looking at in order to be updated, et cetera. Susan, I know you were very much involved in that. Um, a- and so this is kind of intended in that spirit. Uh, are we within that spirit, Susan? I'm asking you, because you were here for the last one.
I mean, I, I'll defer to Joe and the, the, you know, yeah. But I, I think it's, it, it's not typical, you know, an ordinance is sort of proposed in some fashion by the planning board, but it does happen. Um, I know my own planning board, we spent three years on assigned ordinance. And then handed it for a town, to borough council. It was excruciating. Um, same thing with, you know, some zoning changes. Perhaps they initiated at the zoning board or the planning board. But ultimately, it's the, it's the governing body who has the jurisdiction.
All right. All right, so, um.
I have one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
I just wanna say, you know, the people who are doing new construction these days, we're, we're not building the old-fashioned Cape Cod, you know, with one garage. We're building these monster homes. You know, the biggest home you can get on the smallest piece of property is, is pretty safe to say. And then to throw another 220 line in the garage, I, I don't think it's gonna affect anybody's. You know, thoughts on that. And the same thing for remodel, and I'm sorry, a complete knockdown. You're knocking down a house to put on something massive on your property. Again, you're gonna run it along the line. And, and if you're not gonna upgrade to a 220 amp, uh, service then, or 200 amp service, excuse me. Uh, I don't, I don't, then you've got a bad, a bad contractor. So.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're, people are, oh, I can't do my remodeling now because of, of a 220 line in the garage. I, I don't think that's gonna happen at all. I like the idea.
All right. Well, Steve, if.
I still have that question.
Steve, you've got a lot of feedback. You've got.
Yeah.
I think you've got a lot of support.
What is the, the definition of remodel?
I think you're gonna have to take that offline, Steve.
Yeah, Steve, I'll, I'll do, I'll do a little bit of looking, uh, and we'll, we'll see if we can find something. It may already exist. Some code and possibly certainly, you know, perhaps building code.
A- and Steve, you can always just have the remodel part taken out for the time being. If you feel like. That's a burden you don't wanna, uh, tackle at this time.
Well, but you know, legitimately, if somebody's adding a garage that's being remodeled, then that should include it. As I said, if you're doing a kitchen. Well, forget about it.
Yeah, a- a- there's another part of this, Steve. Put too much into it, you're, you're opening yourself up for more people to disagree with you. Cause I, I'll be honest, I don't know if I agree with you about the garage part.
Okay.
So just use that as additional feedback.
No problem.
Okay. Um, so I think we've concluded that, that matter on the agenda. And that means we've completed our overall agenda for the meeting. Um, are there any other, uh, comments that any members of the board would like to make?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna go to Nick first. I heard him speak up.
Thank you. So, uh, I don't know if this is the proper place to bring this up. Uh, but I coached a lot of baseball. And we encounter, you know, the two basic fields. You had your 4660, which is your normal little league size. And your 690, which is bigger league size. Yet there typically is no dedicated field in town for 5070 field, which roughly runs between ages 11 and 12. And I wanna know the process that we'd have to go through. Is it something that's planning board or is it council? Uh, that we could get a field in town that's usable by everyone, uh, that could be a dedicated 5070 field?
Council.
That's council, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Nick? All right, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, well, I had a conversation with Councilwoman Greg Liani the other day. And it seems that town council was investigating using the Noel West for their council meetings, so that they can go back to public meetings. Which may mean that we too could then go back to public meetings instead of WebEx.
I think we can definitely look into that. Um, so I'll consult with, uh, Nora on where that is. I'm sure they're not doing it for free. So there may be a, uh, there, there may be a budget aspect to it that, that needs to be accounted for, but. That's not something I would be involved in a decision.
Well, that's a township facility.
Yeah, but they're around $1,500 per meeting.
Is that what they're charging the council?
Yeah. The other option is the PAL building, which we kinda control now too, since we're putting all the dollars into it. The, the cost is right now is, is what's being looked at, uh, what's reasonable. But they do have to disinfect it afterwards, set it up. The video, the, uh, the sound system, uh, all has to be set up. And then it has to be disinfected afterwards, so, uh. Uh, it can be used someplace else, but as some other group. That's a cost. And of course, that's to be absorbed either by the coun- council or the planning board, whoever wants to use it. Um, so it's still in the discussion stages, but we were hoping to have our first meeting. Uh, May 1st, but it doesn't sound like we're gonna get there at that time.
All right. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, I will accept the motion to close the meeting.
I'll move, then there's more.
All right, second?
Snuck in the ball, Tom.
All right. All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, this meeting is closed.
I was waving. I wasn't voting. I'm sorry.
All right, so seeing none, the meeting's closed. Have a great evening, everyone.
Good night, all.